...of Allegheny County Council to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent prayer or reflection. Thank you, everyone. Please be seated. Jared, please take roll.
Mr. Bekowski.
Here.
Mr. Bonnerati.
Here.
Mr. Embrasia.
Here.
Ms. Filiagi.
Here.
Mr. Futolis.
Here.
Mr. Grisbeck.
Here.
Ms. Hallam.
Here.
Mr. Klein.
Yeah, he's here.
We'll hold Mr. Klein in abeyance. Mr. Macy.
Here.
Ms. Nakaradi Chakis.
Here.
Mr. Paul Mary.
Here.
Mr. Paul Messina.
Here.
Ms. Pritsia.
Here.
Mr. Walton.
Here.
President Katina.
Here.
As of right now, we have 14 members present.
Okay, we'll begin with proclamation slash certificates, 13401-25.
A proclamation recognizing the week of March 2nd through the 8th is Women in Construction Week, sponsored by Councilmember Hallam. Before proceeding, please let the record reflect that Mr. Klein is now present.
Now that Councilman Klein's here, I am ready to go. So this is a proclamation declaring Women in Construction Week in Allegheny County, whereas Allegheny County, as well as the region of Western Pennsylvania, continues to strive for higher levels of construction and development growth. And whereas Allegheny County is committed to reaffirming the goals of fair opportunities for women and minorities in the construction industry. And whereas, the National Association of Women in Construction is a nonprofit and international organization that promotes and supports the advancement and employment of women in the construction industry. And whereas, the National Association of Women in Construction was founded in 1955 in Texas and now serves more than 6,000 members in 120 chapters in the United States and Canada, as well as affiliates in Australia, New Zealand, United Kingdom, and South Africa. And whereas, the Pittsburgh area Chapter 161 of the National Association of Women in Construction was first chartered on March 29, 1969, with 33 founding members, and now includes women who are actively employed in all aspects of the construction industry, such as business owners, managers, consultants, tradeswomen, operators, architects, engineers, accountants, and attorneys. And whereas, during the week of March 2nd through 8th, 2025, the National Association of Women in Construction chapters throughout the United States and Canada will be holding special events to celebrate the annual Women in Construction Week. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Allegheny County Councilmember Bethany Hallam, do hereby recognize and commend the women who participate in the construction industry throughout our region and proclaim the week of March 2nd through 8th, 2025, to be Women in Construction Week in Allegheny County. And witness whereof, I have hereunto caused the seal of the county of Allegheny to be affixed this 25th day of February, 2025. And I am so excited to have Amanda and Joelle come up and tell us a little bit about what you do and what this means to you. This is truly my favorite thing to do every year, is give you this proclamation. So thank you for everything, and we're happy to celebrate you all. You're welcome.
Excuse me, let me get my notes. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for having us here this evening. I'm honored, my name's Joelle Salerno, and I am honored to be here on behalf of NAWIC Pittsburgh. I serve as the Vice President of the Board of NAWIC. Our President Sherri Thomas is out of town, or she would be here herself, I know. But we are always so honored to get this proclamation from the county every year for WIC Week. WIC Week is a time to recognize the incredible women who are shaping the construction industry in Pittsburgh and across the country. Everyday women across all trades, offices, job sites prove that skill, leadership, and determination are not determined by your gender. Here in Pittsburgh, we're breaking barriers, building careers, and strengthening our industry with diverse perspectives and innovative ideas. NAWIC exists to empower women in construction, to provide mentorship, education, and a network of support. But our mission doesn't stop there. So we continue to advocate for women to succeed in the business side, the trades, wherever their talents lead them, and we're so happy to do that. And I did want to highlight, one of our big programs throughout the year is Camp NAWIC, Girls in Construction Camp, which this year is going to be our third year. It's a week-long day camp for girls entering 8th to 12th grade. We design a week-long curriculum of getting to show them different apprenticeship-based trades, college-based careers, and non-college careers that you can learn as a skill on an office side, in, you know, the emerging technology fields, virtual design and construction. There are so many different pathways that you can take in construction, and we just want to show girls that those opportunities are available to them and give them a supportive environment to learn about those opportunities that they might not otherwise see. So we hope that that can be a resource, and please reach out to us if we can provide any resources on the workforce development side or any perspectives on women in construction. Thank you very much for your time.
Excuse me, President Katina, can I be added to that? Please.
Yes.
Me as well.
Anyone not want to be added? Add everyone.
One, two, three.
Thank you. Congratulations, 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 congratulations. Yes, no problem, sir. We do have, after those, we do have one additional proclamation to present. So I'd like the clerk to read the title, after which I'd like to motion to add it to our agenda for presentation.
That's a proclamation recognizing Sir Pizza for serving residents of the North Hills and community at large for 50 years, sponsored by Councilmember Katina and all of the members of council.
Is there a motion to add this to the agenda? Second. Motion has been made in second. Any discussion? Hearing, no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Would you join me, Councilwoman Filiagi?
Rick's can go on there probably, because he's been for 50 years as well.
So I was reading, I do a lot of reading before bedtime, and one night I was reading about this little pizza shop in the North Hills that was celebrating its 50-year anniversary. And I started reading through the article, and I'm like, I know that pizza shop very well, and it's a 50-year anniversary. So needless to say, that's why we're here tonight, to celebrate Sir Pizza. So I wanted to surprise Councilwoman Filiagi with this proclamation, because it's not too often that we get a chance to do something like that for one of our own members. I was trying to do it for Councilman Futolis before his devastating fire, but it didn't work out unfortunately that night, so, but we tried, Nick. Late congratulations on everything that you've done, so. But without further ado, whereas Sir Pizza celebrates 50 years by continuing to be good to the very edge, this March marks 50th year since the Midwestern brand found a home at 320 Sawickley Oakmont Road. And whereas, in 1975, both sets of Filiagi parents, Ron and the late Marcy Filiagi, and Rich and Sandy Filiagi, state the claim on the storefront at the intersection of Rochester and Sawickley Oakmont Roads. In a town filled with more traditional pizzerias, brothers Ron and Rich, who are still actively involved today, took the unknown brand from pauper to prince, creating a North Hills institution that is commonly known today. And whereas, Wendell Schwartz opened the original restaurant in Lafayette, Indiana in 1957, under the name of Pizza King. A separate chain, Sir Pizza, also using the Pizza King name, was incorporated in 1965 in Muncie, Indiana, by Robert Schwartz, Wendell's brother. And in 1966, they expanded the Pizza King outside of Indiana, under the name of Sir Pizza. And whereas, in the 1960s, Marcy Filiagi's brother, Pete Jubek, excuse me, Pete Jubek, worked at a Pizza King in Muncie, Indiana, and later partnered with Pizza King Management and franchised all of the out-of-state operations under the Sir Pizza banner. Over the years, Sir Pizza has included sites in Kentucky, Tennessee, Florida, Ohio, North Carolina, Pennsylvania, and even abroad. And whereas, each of Jubek's Fayette country-born siblings, including Marcy, I like this part, this was when I was reading this that night, received keys to the kingdom of taking over different territories with their respective spouses, so Sir Pizza could reign supreme. The hard-working Filiagi family is composed of teachers, doctors, lawyers, and even public servants, and Sir Pizza is the center of their family. And whereas, Sir Pizza franchises markets the pizzas with the phrase "good to the very edge," which purports to reference the lack of a traditional crust in their pizzas, ron pies sliced into bite-sized squares with crumbled toppings and evenly distributed to the very edge. Since its first beginning in March of 1975, the dough is still made fresh daily, and Sir Pizza continues to use only the freshest ingredients. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the members of Allegheny County Council, do hereby recognize Sir Pizza for serving the residents of North Hills and the community at large for 50 years. Furthermore, we congratulate Sir Pizza upon reaching this truly milestone anniversary and offer best wishes for continued success. Congratulations. Would you like to say anything?
Well, I could say a lot, and we don't have time, but I am truly surprised and overwhelmed by the generous nature of council to acknowledge my family. It really, truly is my family, and these stories are so, we have a rich history. My family will be incredible, but they actually don't even really acknowledge that I'm on council, so this will be the true testament that I have some influence over here. It is all about Sir Pizza, it's our family-centric domain. And the woman who wrote this article, I think a lot of people know, it's Kristy Graver, who is the food editor of Pittsburgh Magazine, and she is obsessed with Sir Pizza, and we are the beneficiary for creativity. We do have things like Royal Feast is the name of our everything pizza, and Crusader Hoagie. And I just read a review online where someone was very generous, they're still iffy about the pizza, but they said, we were, I didn't know what I expected when we walked into the restaurant, but at least we could have seen a suit of armor, a coat, you know, a suit of armor. And I'm like, we used to have that, believe me, in the 70s. We are still in the green pleather 70s look about us, 70s, 80s look. My 81-year-old father and 78-year-old uncle are still the kings of the kingdom, and I'm in the mailroom, but we have a lot of fun together. I think that I'd like to tell people how our dynamic works. We would probably make much more money on a reality TV show, working with our family, than we actually do making pizza, but it's a labor of love, and I am incredibly honored that you guys have acknowledged it in the county, and I can't wait to show my family. Thank you so much.
Ready to do your picture now?
Did you see that? Look at it. Purple ring.
What a secret you kept.
Wait, you want to move on, or?
Move on.
Okay. We'll now have public comment on any agenda items, or I'm saying, we have one actually to be read into the record, 13404-25.
That's a proclamation congratulating Katie Flore upon the occasion of her retirement from the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas after three decades of service, sponsored by Councilmember Paul Messina.
We'll now have public comment on agenda items.
We have none.
Okay. Approval of minutes, 13410-25.
A motion to approve the minutes of the January 28, 2025, regular meeting of council.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made in second. Any discussion? Hearing, none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Presentation of appointments. All of the appointments being presented this evening are referred to the committee on appointment review. I'd like the clerk to read them all at this point in time.
13405-25 is recommending to the Chief Executive Kimberly Dunlevy to the Juvenile Detention Board of Advisors, sponsored by Councilmember Macy. 13406-25 is recommending to the Chief Executive Rabbi Moisha Meyer Vogel to the Juvenile Detention Board of Advisors, sponsored by Councilmember Filiagi. 13407-25 is recommending to the Chief Executive Robert Mark Davis to the Juvenile Detention Board of Advisors, sponsored by Councilmember Filiagi. 1340825 is recommending to the Chief Executive Lee Davis to the Juvenile Detention Board of Advisors, sponsored by Councilmember Nakaradi Chakis. And 13409-25 is approving the appointment of Ann Morris Baker to the Friends of Park for Hartwood Acres, for term effective through February 25, 2028, sponsored by Councilmember Pritsia.
Thank you. At this point in time, rather than go into unfinished business, we're going to skip back to 13402-25.
That's a proclamation recognizing Angela Mike's 30 years with Pittsburgh Public Schools, sponsored by Councilmember Walton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for working with us and delaying this presentation till the recipient arrived. Whereas Angela Mike has dedicated over 30 years to public education and currently serves as Executive Director of the Career and Technical Education Division in Pittsburgh Public Schools. And whereas, under Angela's leadership, PPS CTE has expanded job exploration opportunities by reigniting cooperative education, strengthening community partnerships, and launched new CTE programs and elected courses, reaching over 4,000 students each year. And whereas Angela has ensured stated art equipment for all CTE labs, including virtual and augmented reality, she also spearheaded the implementation of a personal finance graduation required course for all PPS students. And whereas Angela has been instrumental in ensuring that all PPS CTE students graduate with stackable industry certifications, dual enrollment, articulated credits, and a confirmed plan for post-secondary education and/or career contributions to workforce development and economic upward mobility in our city. She also initiated a pathway for CTE students to obtain their Pittsburgh Promise dollars early to pay for college credits earned in high school, dual enrollment, to accelerate their post-secondary schooling. And whereas, she has been recognized for multiple best practices, including innovative remote learning initiatives, virtual field trips, the creation of an e-portfolio, and securing Pennsylvania's first-approved CTE Carpentry Pre-Aprentice Program, which was nationally televised on CBS News. And whereas Angela has successfully obtained millions of dollars through state and federal grants to support PPS CTE, collaborated with key stakeholders on a national and local level, and developed marketing strategies along with a virtual tour and translated CTE procedures to elevate CTE's viability, visibility, and accessibility to all students. And whereas, her leadership extends beyond the classroom, having influenced policy discussions in the state and the United States Capitol Building, served on the City of Pittsburgh committees, enforced numerous business, industry, and post-secondary partnerships that connect CTE students to meaningful career pathways. And whereas Angela's passion for CTE stems from her own experience as a former cosmetology student at PPS, and has remained steadfast in her mission to rebrand and enhance career and technical education, ensuring that it is recognized as a rigorous and valuable pathway for all students. She is a dedicated advocate for career and technical education, regularly speaking at community meetings and foundations, and actively participating in Alpha Sorority, providing services to all mankind. And whereas, her commitment extends beyond education through volunteerism and charity events, races, the Light of Life Mission on Mayor Gani's Transition Team for Education and Workforce, as a champion on Mayor Gani's Education and Workforce Community Table Committee, demonstrating her commitment to uplifting the Pittsburgh community. And whereas, due to her exceptional work, Angela has been recognized for her work in career and technical education as a recipient of numerous awards, such as City Empower 100 Black Trailblazers, Carnegie Science Leadership and Career in Technical Education Award, and Pittsburgh Technology Council Innovation and Education Award, to name a few. Now therefore be resolved that I, Allegheny County Councilmember DeWitt Walton, do hereby declare February 25, 2025, as Angela Mike Day in Allegheny County. I honor and commend Angela for her outstanding 30 years of advocacy and contributions to career and technical education and the community, her unwavering commitment to empowering student success, and a visionary leadership in shaping the future workforce of Pittsburgh. And witness thereof, I have hereunto caused the seal of Allegheny County to be affixed this 25th day of 2025. Congratulations, Angela.
First of all, thank you so much, Councilmen DeWitt Walton, for all your support over the years and for doing this today. I'm very honored, and I want to thank the entire council for allowing us to be here today, and with my colleagues and other CTE colleagues that are in the room, to accept this. And I just want to say that all of your support, and I've heard many of you talk, and I do watch and listen to what's going on around the city, folks are really in support of career and technical education. Please continue that, we need that. Being in it over 30 years, and also being a former career and tech student when I was in school, no one even knew I was in career and tech. They looked at it as the old vocational education. Even my own father at that time said, I worked hard and moved the point breeze so that you could have a different life. Why are you in this vocational course? And I said, Dad, it's what I'm passionate about. And years later, here we are, and now career and technical education is sexy. I can't believe it, after 30 years, things look different, and our job forecast also looks very different. So if we're really paying attention to the data, we don't want to make, we want to make sure that we don't prepare any of our students for dead-end roads that lead to a lot of debt and going into careers where there may not be enough job for all the folks to go into them. So I want to thank you again. I want to continue to work hard at Pittsburgh Public Schools, making sure that all the students and the families are aware of the opportunities for them, and continue to bring in resources so that our students can thrive in their different career fields that they're passionate about, like I once was in CTE. So thank you all again, I really appreciate this.
We're going to delay the photograph till we get through the next proclamation.
Okay.
So we can not waste anyone's time.
So we'll move on to 13403-25.
That's a proclamation declaring February 2025 to be Career and Technical Education Month in Allegheny County, sponsored also by Councilmember Walton.
Thanks again. So it's 95 degrees outside. You turn the thermostat to 78, nothing happens. Who do you call? Do you call a PhD? Or do you call a steam fitter? Career and technical education is critical to the infrastructure of America. It is how we build a plausible, secure, viable future. Not to dispel or diminish academia, but again, we got to lay bricks, we got to build walls, and CTE does just that. So with that being said, whereas February 1st to 28th, 25, has been designated as Career and Technical Education Month by the Association for Career and Technical Education. And whereas Pittsburgh Public Schools Career and Technical Education, Steel Center for Career and Technical Education, Parkway West Career and Technology Center, A.W. Beatty Career Center, Fourth Road Career Center and Technology Center, and McKeesport Area School District Career and Technology Center, offer students the opportunity to gain the academic, technical, and employability skills necessary for true career readiness through partnerships with local business and industry. And whereas students in the CTE program participate in authentic, meaningful experiences that improve the quality of their education and increase their engagement and achievement in leave high school with an e-portfolio equipped for the workforce and post-secondary. And whereas CTE provides students with career exploration opportunities early in their educational experience, which enables them to make informed and beneficial decisions about their academic coursework and pursue established programs of study and career pathways. Whereas leaders from business and industry nationwide report increasing challenges to addressing the skills gap and connecting qualified professionals with careers in critical and growing CTE-related fields such as education, advanced manufacturing, skilled trade sector, healthcare, hospitality, information technology, and transportation. And whereas, CTE prepares students for these and other fulfilling careers by offering integrated programs of study that link secondary and post-secondary education and lead to the attainment of cost-free, stackable, industry-recognized certifications and paid cooperative education learning opportunities during high school. And whereas, CTE programs ensure that employers have access to a qualified and thriving workforce, ensuring our nation is a strong and competitive economy, equipping all students with skills to succeed in college and career lab. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Allegheny County Councilmember DeWitt Walton, do hereby proclaim February 1st to 28th, 2025, as Career and Technical Education Month in Allegheny County, and urge all citizens to become familiar with the services and benefits offered by CTE programs in this community, and support and participate in these programs to enhance their individual skills and productivity. And witness thereof, I hereunto have caused the seal of Allegheny County to be affixed this 25th day of February, 2025. And I present the second one to you.
And on behalf of Pittsburgh Public Schools, thank you. We have over 22 programs at our district. We also, like was mentioned, offer career exploratory courses. We touch about over 4,000 students a year with introductory courses so that students can get exposed, and those who want to go deeper go into programs. And we have a virtual tour online if anyone would like to see any programs. It's like if you're looking for a vacation, you can see a 360 of the labs, and applications are open. So if anybody, families, friends, community, we're always open, and we talk to families, we'll take them on tours in person, whatever they'd like to be exposed to career and technical education in Pittsburgh Public. And I'll let one of my other colleagues from one of the other centers speak.
Thank you for the recognition of career and technical education. I am from Steel Center for Career and Technical Education. We have 17 programs right now. We're going through a $35 million renovation at this moment, and we, you know, CTE changed my life, so I'm on a mission to help students change theirs. And we prepare the students for industry, employment, military, college, post-secondary, whatever they're, you know, they're looking into. And just thank you for the recognition, because career and technical education is a big part of these students' lives.
Hi, I'm Jamie Lou Sprink. I am the Director at McKeesport Area School District's Career and Technical Center.
And witness thereof, I hereunto have caused the seal of Allegheny County to be affixed this 25th day of February 2025. And I present the second one to you.
Yes. And on behalf of Pittsburgh Public Schools, thank you. We have over 22 programs at our district. We also, like was mentioned, offer career exploratory courses. We touch about over 4,000 students a year with introductory courses so that students can get exposed, and those who want to go deeper go into programs. And we have a virtual tour online if anyone would like to see any programs. It's like if you're looking for a vacation, you can see a 360 of the labs, and applications are open. So if anybody, families, friends, community, we're always open, and we talk to families. We'll take them on tours in person, whatever they'd like to be exposed to career and technical education in Pittsburgh Public. And I'll let one of my other colleagues from one of the other centers speak.
Thank you for the recognition of career and technical education. I am from Steel Center for Career and Technical Education. We have 17 programs right now. We're going through a $35 million renovation at this moment. And we, you know, CTE changed my life, so I'm on a mission to help students change theirs. And we prepare the students for industry, employment, military, college, post-secondary, whatever they're, you know, they're looking into. And just thank you for the recognition, because career and technical education is a big part of these students' lives.
Hi, I'm Jamie Lou Spring. I am the Director at McKeesport Area School District's Career and Technical Center, and I just also want to second all those sentiments, and thank you so much for the recognition this evening.
Okay, let's go, gang.
Say what?
Yeah. Let's go first. And then we'll do.
Gotcha. Okay.
Am I making someone high?
Nope. I missed it. I got you. Yeah, no, you're good. Okay, ready?
All right, ready?
All right, one, two, three. Got it.
Come on in.
Can somebody go on this side of the table?
Those who need a little balance.
All right, everybody, ready? One, two, three. Got it.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to unfinished business. Committee on Appointment Review for the second reading, 13370-25.
Approving the appointment of Grant Gitlin to the Allegheny County Housing Authority for term to be effective through December 31st, 2029, sponsored by the Chief Executive.
Ms. Nakareti Chakas?
President Katina, the Committee on Appointment Review met on February 18th, 2025, and affirmatively recommended Mr. Gitlin for this appointment, and I'd like to make that motion.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Are we all okay with a, do we need a roll call on this, or?
No.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. 13390-25.
Approving the appointment of Alan Chakrow to the Accountability Conduct and Ethics Commission for term effective through February 11th, 2030, sponsored by Councilmember Filiagi.
Councilmember Nakareti Chakas?
President Katina, the Committee on Appointment Review met on February 18th, 2025, affirmatively recommended Mr. Chakrow for this commission, and I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Do we need a roll call on this one? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. The remaining appointments are all to the various Friends of Parks organizations. If there are no objections, I'd like the clerk to read all of them at this time, and then I'll recognize Ms. Nakareti Chakas for a single motion to approve all of them altogether. Go ahead and read the titles.
13130-24 is the appointment of James Gezzo to the Harrison Hills Friends through August 20th, 2027, sponsored by Councilmember Fatoulis. This next group is also to Harrison Hills, also all sponsored by Councilmember Fatoulis, but through October 8th, 2027. 13235 is the reappointment of Dan Smith. 13236-24 is the reappointment of Sharon Savetik. 13237-24 is the reappointment of Nicholas Savetik. 13238-24 is the reappointment of Susan Gockler. 13239-24 is the reappointment of David Brook. 13240-24 is the reappointment of Carly Deskins. 13131-24 is the appointment of Sam Ensidler to the Friends of Hartwood Acres through August 20th, 2027, sponsored by Councilmember Hallam. This next group is all sponsored by Councilmember Pritzio and her appointments to Hartwood Acres, the Friends of Hartwood Acres through October 8th, 2027. 13241-24 is the reappointment of Amy Giematte. 13242-24 is the reappointment of Pam Kanopasek. 13244-24 is the reappointment of Allison Bergen. 13245-24 is the reappointment of Gail Scott. 13247-24 is the reappointment of Joe Downing. The next two are to the Friends of South Park through October 8th, 2027. 13234-24 is the appointment of Peter Avansik, sponsored by Councilmember Paul Mary, I apologize. 13249-24 is the appointment of Mary Alice Hogson, sponsored by Councilmember Grisbeck. 13369-25 is the appointment of Lindsay Ritter to the Friends of Boys Park through January 14th, 2028, sponsored by Councilmember Nakareti Chakas. The last three are to the Friends of North Park through February 11th, 2028. 13392-25 is the reappointment of Colleen Litzey, sponsored by Councilmember Pritzio. 13393-25 is the reappointment of Liz Spence, sponsored by Councilmember Pritzio. And 13394-25 is the appointment of Rick McClure, sponsored by Councilmember Filiagi. And that's it.
Councilmember Nakareti Chakas?
President Katina, the Committee on Appointment Review met on February 18th, 2025, and reviewed all of these appointments and reappointments and affirmatively recommends them, and I'd like to make that motion, please.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Move on to the Committee on Parks for the second reading, 13383-25.
An ordinance to the County of Allegheny, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, authorizing amateur astronomers associates in Pittsburgh to continue to use real property in the county's Deer Lakes Park for astronomy-related programs and activities sponsored by the Chief Executive.
Vice President Paul Mary?
Thank you, Mr. President. So we met a week ago, and this has been an ongoing thing for years up there at Deer Lakes, and if you ever been, if you haven't been up there, just take a trip up there sometime. It's really worthwhile. And we were, this was affirmatively recommended at full council, and I make a motion to...
Second.
It's approved, and as their second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Let's take a roll call vote, please, Jared.
On the motion approved, Mr. Bekowski?
Yes.
Mr. Bonnerati?
Yes.
Mr. Embrasia?
Yes.
Ms. Filiagi?
Yes.
Mr. Fatoulis?
Yes.
Mr. Grisbeck?
Yes.
Ms. Hallam?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Ms. Nakareti Chakas?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Messina?
Yes.
Ms. Pritzio?
Yes.
Mr. Walton?
Yes.
President Katina?
Yes.
Eyes 15, no zero, the bill passes.
13385-25.
An ordinance to the County of Allegheny, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, authorizing family links incorporated to continue to use real property in the county's Boys Park for providing human services-related programs sponsored by the Chief Executive.
Vice President Paul Mary?
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of council. So we met a week ago, and this has been an ongoing thing for years up there at Deer Lakes, and if you ever been, if you haven't been up there, just take a trip up there sometime. It's really worthwhile. And we were, this was affirmatively recommended at full council, and I make a motion to...
Second.
It's approved, and as their second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Let's take a roll call vote, please, Jared.
On the motion approved, Mr. Bekowski?
Yes.
Mr. Bonnerati?
Yes.
Mr. Embrasia?
Yes.
Ms. Filiagi?
Yes.
Mr. Fatoulis?
Yes.
Mr. Grisbeck?
Yes.
Ms. Hallam?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Ms. Nakareti Chakas?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Messina?
Yes.
Ms. Pritzio?
Yes.
Mr. Walton?
Yes.
President Katina?
Yes.
Eyes 15, no zero, the bill passes.
13384-25.
An ordinance to the County of Allegheny, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, authorizing family links incorporated to continue to use real property in the county's Boys Park for providing human services-related programs sponsored by the Chief Executive.
Vice President Paul Mary?
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of council, this is another ongoing arrangement with these, with these good people over at Boys Park, has been going on for a good while. Another very worthwhile endeavor for the county to be involved in. I moved, we met last week, and affirmatively recommended, and I moved for approval.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please, Jared.
On the motion approved, Mr. Bekowski?
Yes.
Mr. Bonnerati?
Yes.
Mr. Embrasia?
Yes.
Ms. Filiagi?
Yes.
Mr. Fatoulis?
Yes.
Mr. Grisbeck?
Yes.
Ms. Hallam?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Ms. Nakareti Chakas?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Messina?
Yes.
Ms. Pritzio?
Yes.
Mr. Walton?
Yes.
President Katina?
Yes.
Eyes 15, no zero, the bill passes.
13385-25.
An ordinance to the County of Allegheny, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, authorizing North Hills Council of Governments to continue to use real property in the county's North Park as a leaf compost site for nearby communities sponsored by the Chief Executive.
Vice President Paul Mary?
Again, Mr. President, members of council, this again was affirmatively recommended, and I move for approval.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please, Jared.
On the motion approved, Mr. Bekowski?
Yes.
Mr. Bonnerati?
Yes.
Mr. Embrasia?
Yes.
Ms. Filiagi?
Yes.
Mr. Fatoulis?
Yes.
Mr. Grisbeck?
Yes.
Ms. Hallam?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Ms. Nakareti Chakas?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Messina?
Yes.
Ms. Pritzio?
Yes.
Mr. Walton?
Yes.
President Katina?
Yes.
Eyes 15, no zero, the bill passes.
Are there any liaison reports this evening? Hearing none. Moving on to new business ordinances resolutions, 13411-25.
An ordinance authorizing the County of Allegheny, in conjunction with the Department of Public Works and Law Department, to donate and convey by special warranty deed one parcel of county-owned land, being more particularly described as having 5,983 square feet of effective area of land, known for tax purposes as Block and Lot 213G51, located on Western Avenue, Borough of Emsworth, Allegheny County, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, sponsored by the Chief Executive.
Thank you. That will go to the Committee on Public Works. I will now have public comment on general items.
We have several. First up is Richard Tomorella.
Not here.
Jennifer Jaeger.
Not here.
John Kestowitz.
He's here.
John Kestowitz, 828 Jansey Street, Pittsburgh, PA 15206. I can continue to provide you with research studies and statistics regarding why the restraint chair needs to be reinstated. But to really understand and get a picture of what we are talking about, it would be most helpful for you to talk with the correctional officers, who are confronted with their challenges regarding the resident's safety and the officer's safety. Our officers can describe to you how dangerous it is for our residents and officers transporting resisting residents by holding them and trying to move them while they could be hit and kicking or biting an officer. I do think it would be worth your while to make a bridge with our officers and participate in a Zoom meeting, which I can set up. Our officers are working a lot of overtime and different shifts, but this meeting will be of significant value to them to be able to disclose to you their challenges and ideas of how to limit risk of injury to the residents and themselves. I will do the best I can to facilitate everyone's scheduling needs. There have been numerous studies on the restraint chair. Besides limiting risk of injury in transporting residents, the Department of Health recognizes that a restraint chair has the advantage that the resident is seated in an upright position at eye level with medical and mental health staff. De-escalation techniques can be used to stabilize the resident from this position so a therapeutic relationship can be developed. Clinical procedures could take place to remedy an apparent medical crisis and stabilize the resident. It is very possible that our healthcare staff at our jail would be open to the idea of providing you with an understanding and a picture of how the restraint chair can be used to increase this opportunity, to increase this opportunity for our medical and mental health staff to provide critical care to our residents. We are at a crossroad in which I believe you can be receiving very valuable insights from our frontline staff, and you have the opportunity to make a change that will have a significant impact on the health and safety of our residents and correctional officers and the future security of the families of our correctional officers. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Next up is Lisa Seraphin.
Not here.
Tom Bailey.
Good evening. My name is Tom Bailey. I have three topics I'd like to address this evening. First one is the 2018 U.S. EPA evaluation of the Health Department, my wife's asthma, and Mr. Fatoulis's health. My wife and I live in Penn Hills, and if you've read the EPA's 2018 evaluation of the Health Department, you'll see the EPA found that the Health Department to be short-staffed, they are 12, they were 12 to 18 months delayed in completing Title V permits, and because of that, they said they should increase their Title V permit fees. My wife has lived in many different locations in the United States, but her asthma is the worst here. And she belongs to what the county calls a sensitive group, along with children, older adults, persons with lung, and heart disease. That's approximately a quarter of the population of this county. We used to live in Scottsdale, Westmoreland County. The father of the playmate of our younger daughter worked in Allegheny County. It turns out his name is Mike Rhodes. He's the plant manager of Claritin Coke Works. Now that we live in Allegheny County, we believe we know why he and his family moved 38 miles away from where he worked. The U.S. Steel Claritin Coke Works is the largest polluter of particulate matter, benzene, and greenhouse gases in the county. So after a few attempts, I was able to correspond with Mr. Fatoulis. He's our county council member. I wanted to know what he thought of last December's attempt by the Health Department to increase the Title V permit fees. I've learned from Mr. Fatoulis, quote, "The permit fees should have been adjusted on a yearly basis. Apparently, the last administration failed to do it," end quote. That's what he wrote to me. So when the Allegheny County Health Department proposed to increase the permit fees 700% in December, the council votes to approve just weren't there. The Allegheny County Health Department is still trying to comply with that 2018 EPA order. Meanwhile, the Health Department is not fully funded, and polluting industries do not pay what the EPA said they should have seven years ago. If you don't fully fund an enforcement agency, you have weakened its ability to enforce air quality laws. When the cat is away, the mice will play. This council must increase the Title V fees and enable the Health Department to force the Claritin Coke Works and others to follow emission standards and keep the air quality index in the good green range, so people, my wife, can go outside and not have to worry about trying to breathe. My wife and other sensitive residents will be watching for this council to force polluters like the Claritin Coke Works to pay the increased permit fees. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next up is Gabriel Cisneros.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name is Dr. Gabriel Cisneros, and I'm a pediatrician with Children's Community Pediatrics. I also serve as Medical Director at Children's Express Care Children's Hospital of Pittsburgh and Secretary-Treasure of the Pennsylvania Chapter of the American Academy of Pediatrics. In full disclosure, my testimony represents my own views and not necessarily those of the organizations to which I belong. In 2021, the American Academy of Pediatrics published a policy statement titled "Ambien Air Pollution: Health Hazards to Children." The paper describes the dangers of air pollution on the health of children. Toxic emissions like ozone, carbon monoxide, nitrous oxide, and particulate matter from industry and fossil fuel-based transportation and energy production affect the young from the prenatal period through infancy and into early, middle, and late childhood. The result is an increased risk for many health problems, including prematurity and low birth weight, asthma, cancer, autism, cardiovascular disease, obesity, and metabolic disease. I'm sad to report that in my daily practice, I see children suffering these diseases on a regular basis. My patients experience difficult and lifelong consequences from these illnesses, including hospitalizations, missed school days, economic hardship, and shorter life expectancy. Furthermore, Black, Hispanic, and Asian-American children are more likely to live in areas with unhealthy air quality, as well as children living in poverty. This is a tragic example of environmental injustice in our own community. But it doesn't have to be this way. I have hope that we can make progress in reducing the prevalence of these diseases and prevent children from suffering by improving the quality of the air we breathe. My ask of you tonight is to vote yes on Allegheny County Health Department's plan to fully fund its air quality program through a revised permit fee schedule. This will help fund air quality surveillance and better enforce clean air requirements and thereby reduce toxic emissions from industry. In doing so, we can clean the air we breathe here in Allegheny County and beyond, and make a healthier environment for our children to grow up in. Thank you.
Deborah Hamel.
Good evening, everyone.[1682.23]